Bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. Shout out that we blessed that wonderful name of Him who does things well, the one who woke us up early this morning and started us on a brand-new day. And shout out that we thankful to Him and for Him for all of His kindness, all of His tender mercy. And shout out that we just thank Him for all that He means to each one of us individually and as people and just as the fact of being His creation. Shout out to all of our New Hopeians, to all of our friends and families that shares with us each week during this hour. And shout out that we are grateful for you. Shout out that I want you to take a quick moment out and call or inbox, text, church member, family member, friend, and let them know that this, the New Hope Number One Baptist Church weekly Bible study is on. Shout out that I want all of our visitors who may be visiting in our city and may be visiting somewhere nearby. Shout out that it will do you good. You're invited to come to the Hope. Shout out 2338 Chalk Top Corner Road here in the great city of Thomasville. And shout that it will do you good. You won't leave the same way you came. And shout out that you're most heartily welcome to come and be a part with us each Sunday, Sunday School at 9:30, and then morning worship at 11 o'clock. And then during the week ministries taking place. Shout out that we invite you to come be a part. Let's pray. Greetings God, our Father. We thank you today for all your many rich blessings. Thank you for another day's journey, another week that you've kept us, another week you blessed us, another week you smiled on us. And Father, here we are again. I ask that you would look on us with our pity, our compassion, our mercy. Lord, has there ever was a time that we sure enough need you? We need you now. We're living in some trying time. And Father, the only one that can do us any good is you. You is our hope. God, we praying now for mankind everywhere. God, those who within our trust family and our community and our city and our state and our world who stands in the need of just a touch from you. Oh God, touch. God, you is our healer. You is our bond in Gityad. Those who dealing with physical sickness. God, touch them right now. God, I know that you can heal through medicine. But then God, I do believe that you can just touch. You can speak healing. And God, I stands in the gap. I asking God that you would just do it now. God, I'm praying that you would not only heal physically, heal mentally those who going through mental challenges. God, use a mind regulator. Touch right now. And then God, I'm praying for those who are going through some spiritualist sickness and spiritually elements. And God, you promised us that through your Son Jesus, the shedding of his blood, that God, that he was wounded for our transgression. He was bruised for our iniquity. And the chastisement of his peace was upon God. I'm praying for those who are spiritually sick that God, touch them right now. I plead the blood of Jesus. God, I'm praying for the body of Christ as we living in these times. Touch our minds and our hearts for us to be not only a light, but to be salt in the earth and a light in this dark world. Bless us now. Take us back to our praying ground. Let us know that God, that talking to you, God, is healthy for not only us individually, but as a corporate body. Bless us now, God. Praying for the household of faith. Strengthen us. Touch us. Give us a refreshing. God, as we entered into the seasons of revival throughout the land. Awaken that which has been dead. Revive us, oh God, through your word, through your spirit. And God, we praying that you will let the revival begin within each one of our hearts. Bless us now, Jesus. Bless us now. And we're going to give you all the praise and the glory. Come now in a personal Holy Spirit. Touch our spiritually ears that we can hear, our eyes that we can see, our hearts that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in our sight. Oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. And all of those that love the Lord said, “Amen.” All right, let's get right into our discussion on today. Our study as we still dealing with a continuation of the importance of commitment. And the last couple of weeks we've been focusing on that ninth chapter of Luke, verse 23, where if we going to be a disciple, we going to be committed to the word of God, to be a learner, to be continuing in training. It's more to it than just the talk is that we got to also walk. That there's some things that the Lord requires us, not as religious individuals, but as Christians, as above all, more as disciples. That's what he's looking for. He's looking for disciples. And so we hear Jesus saying to his present disciples at that time, and he's talking to us now, is that if we going to be a follower of Him, if we going to be labeled or identified as little Christ, Christ, is that we must count the cost. We must take into consideration what it really means to be a follower, to be identified, to be labeled as a child of God. And so he challenged us in that 23rd verse. And we dealt with it on last week. There one other challenge. There's two challenges. Two challenge that he challenged us that if we going to follow Him, is that we dealt with that on last week as far as the first challenge is deny yourself. Don't deny your existence, but you got to give up yourself. And so we want to deal with that second challenge. It's right in that 23rd verse. It said, “Take up your cross.” Okay, take up your cross daily. That's what the King James translation says. The New King James, “Take up your cross daily.” And let me, I love how this easy make it kind of simplify, kind of get it, put it right in our place for understanding. Let me read also what the easier Bible says as pertaining to this particular part of Jesus' challenge. And that part say, “Every day we must be like someone who carries his own cross to go and die.” Okay, I want you to see the difference. It's saying the same thing, but it's giving more emphasis. It's kind of explaining it more. It said, “New King James,” it said, “Take up your cross daily.” And the easier says is that every day, still dealing with daily. Every day we must be like someone who carries his own cross to go and die. And so Jesus says to us plainly that if we going to be a follower of Him, if we going to be little Christ, is that we got to not only deny ourselves, but we got to count the cost of willing to die. That's what he talks about taking up our cross. Taking up our cross is that we have been called. Listen at me, listen at me brothers and sisters. We have been called to die. We have been called to die. We have been called to die. He bids us to come and be willing to die. And so look at what Jesus uses as a symbol of explaining what it means to die. And so he says that as Christians, as representatives of me, is that the symbol that I'm going to use is going to be a cross. Okay, it's going to be simply a cross. And I thought about that. And I pondered after, you know, looking at the scriptures, is that why in the world would Jesus choose a cross to represent we as Christians, we as His disciples? Even though we know that His ultimate mission was to come and to die. He was, it was His destiny to die for mankind. And so we knew from the prophecies on the Old Testament that it had been predicted that one should die and it so happened to be Jesus. So why would he choose a cross to represent we, us as Christians? Why not a dove? Why not a dove? I'm just going to throw you some, a couple other symbols, other representations that he could have used from a biblical standpoint that perhaps could have been from a student standpoint, most suitable than a cross. Take it, take for example, the dove. You go to the book of Genesis. We see the Lord after the flood is that He tells Noah to send the dove out. And we know that the dove represents what? The dove is a symbol of peace. And a lot of the things that we wear as for our ornaments, especially dealing with jewelry, is that it's all, it's a representation. It's a symbol of many things that whether we know what we believe in it or not, is that when we put on different things that it has a meaning. So keep in mind is that a dove represents peace. And then even dealing with Noah in the book of Genesis is that God made a covenant between Noah, what we known as the Noah covenant. When they dealing with, he destroyed the earth with water. And so he makes an agreement with Noah that he would not destroy the world, the earth anymore with water. And so in order to seal that covenant is that he says that I'm going to give you a sign. And that sign is a rainbow. Are you listening to my word? Okay, so keep that in mind is that he could have used to represent us as his followers, the rainbow. Because the rainbow symbolizes hope and promise. Okay? It symbolizes hope and promise. And then thirdly is that I felt that he could have used the shepherd's staff. Even though we see throughout the Bible is that he refers to his people as sheeps. And a sheep must have a shepherd. And in order to protect the sheeps is that the shepherd must also have what is known as a staff. When you read that 23rd number of Psalms is that David talks about the Lord being his shepherd, but he also knew from all his own personal experience that not only does the shepherd need a rod, but also a staff. The staff is a symbol of protection and leadership. The sheep is one of the most dumbest animal on the planet. And yet the Lord used to represent his children, his people as sheep. Out of all of the other animals that he could have used is that he chose a sheep to represent who we are. And so keep in mind is that he did not use the shepherd's staff, which is a symbol of what? Hope and was a symbol of protection and leadership, but rather he used a cross. So Pastor, what is so significant about the cross? The cross is a symbol of three things. I want to share three things quickly. Of humiliation, suffering, and death. The cross is a symbol of humiliation, suffering, and death. Let me say it again. The cross is a symbol of three things. Humiliation, suffering, and death. And so what Jesus was saying to them and saying to us is that we got to take in consideration is that we are going to be tortured and we got to die. And so he invite us to come to die with him is that we have to die to what? I'm glad you asked. I'm going to do this quickly. We got to die to our own desire, our own pursuits, and our own plans. And it goes back to what he said in the first challenge is that we got to deny ourselves. Is that we got to, we got to be willing to die to our own desires, our own pursuits, our own plan. And this is like I preached a few weeks ago dealing with is that when we look at our agenda is that we got to drop our agenda. We got to make sure that our agenda aligns in with God's agenda. And so Jesus challenged us that we got to die to these, to our own desires daily. Is that we must make a decision to die to ourselves and then do what Pastor? And live for Christ. So our cross to bear is not just a challenging situation or responsibility, but rather it's causing us to turn over our own self and live for God. I think the great C.S. Lewis put it in these words. He said, “Give me all.” That's what Christ said. He said, “Christ said, ‘Give me all. I don't want so much of your time and I don't want much of your money and I don't want much of your work. I want you.’” “I have not come to torment,” that's what C.S. Lewis saying, Christ saying. He said, “I have not come to torment your nature self, but to kill it. No half measure or any good. I don't want to cut off the branch here and there. I want to have the whole tree cut down. Listen to what he said. “I don't want to drill the tooth or crown it or stop it, but I want to cut it. I want to have it.” You know how it is when you go to the dentist is that sometime you can't have no filling. You can't have no crown. That tooth has gotten so bad and so decayed, it got to come out. And so that's what Paul adds on in 1 Corinthians. You read it when you get a chance. Verse, chapter 15, verse 31. And that C clause of that statement, Paul said, “I die daily.” “So every morning that the Lord allow us and bless us to get out of our bed is that it ought to be our ultimate desire, less on myself and more of the Lord.” And you ask yourself, “How can I serve the Lord? How can I give the Lord more?” It's when you start considering others. When you put others in that equation. Less on me, more of the Lord. And when it comes to more of the Lord is that I can't exclude others. I cannot serve the Lord without serving others. Are you listening to me? I can't put the Lord up there and then leave others beside or behind. No, he says, “When you deny self, get self out the way and daily deny yourself, then he said, ‘You can follow me.’” And then look at what he says in verse 24 of that ninth chapter of Luke. He said, “For whosoever wants to save his life will lose it, but whosoever loses his life because of me will save it.” We only begins to live when we die, when we crucify self. I don't care what we have attained, what we have set plans pursued in life until we have yielded our will to the Lord and start living the life that the Lord has called, has destined us to be is that we will not be really living. We just be existing. And so we find that giving up our lives means that we want to be like Christ. So I want to challenge, I want you to think about that. I want you to challenge that. And Jesus helps us out. I want you to get a chance out and read that 14th chapter of Luke. And he talks about, he's still expounding on this discipleship. He's still expounding on being a disciple. And he start talks about giving up. I don't too much like that word the King James used, “Hate.” That's a mighty strong word. But when you look at others' translations, it starts talking about if you love your family in so many ways. I'm kind of paraphrasing quickly. If you love yourself, if you love the things more than the Lord, then he said, “You cannot really be my disciples.” No, many have misinterpreted that passage. And it goes back to what the King James says, “Hate.” It does not say hate. But what Jesus is teaching here is that when you compare your family, your life, your career to the Lord, where is the Lord at? There ought to be nobody, there ought to be nothing. You ought not, I ought not be more important than the Lord. Where is my priorities? The Lord, no, he don't want us to dishown or dislike our family, ourselves, the things that he has blessed. He said, “Compare those to me.” And if you're not willing to have me as priority, then you're not willing, then you can't be a follower of mine. So the ball is in our court. And we're going to pick that up on next week because it get very interesting in that 14th chapter of Luke. And I want to give you that homework to assign you to read that because Jesus then start giving us an example of being putting our priorities in line. All right, God bless you and God keep you Israel. Let us pray. God, we thank you again for your word. We pray that you continue to saturate our hearts and our mind. Give us a hunger and a thirst, not to be like the world, not to be like others, but to be more like you. Father, forgive us for the things that you told us to do and we didn't do. Forgive us, oh God. Continue to own us as your children. We ask all these blessings upon each one who've been a blessing. Receive a blessing from your word on today. And God, we know that your word of going forth that will not return to you void. Bless us now in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.